Nine A is to conduct a public hearing. Twenty twenty four, twenty twenty seven, local control accountability plan. Is the public A, Dr. President, maybe leading this? The board will now hear any comments from any members of the public to wish to speak on this matter. As for the hearing, Dr. President, the overview that the item is to I'm opening the hearing to conduct the public hearing for the three years, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty seven, local control accountability plan. The local county is local control accountability plan, which is commonly referred to as LCAP. Regulations require that each district's LCAP, the public hearing, be held in advance and in a separate meeting for its adoption. Dr. President.
Thank you. Can you, uh, President A, or just me? Detective Captain, it's my pleasure to present to you the next year LCAP. That has been proposed over the last few months. We've gone through the annual review. We've gone through the annual review, which is required. And in addition, our, our partner's input has also led to our next outline for the twenty four, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty seven National School District LCAP. So all educational partnership engagements input was framed around the mission, vision, and core values of the National School District, as well as our new learner profile. Because we want to make sure our actions and our cohesive in getting our students to the best level of education that they can get. So with that, I'll go over the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty seven proposed LCAP goals and actions. So goal one of the new LCAP focuses, continues to focus on English learners. They constitute over fifty four percent of our students. And really our focus is for them to acquire academic English proficiency and redesignate to English proficient so that they can fully access grade level material. This covers the state priorities of three, four, and eight. The actions around this goal really focus on professional learning and instructional coaching for language acquisition in a classroom setting. Curricular supports and coordinated services to provide those nuanced extra help or supports with the families for English learners. Again, we want parent engagement with English learner parents. Make sure that we're providing specific and more targeted services and outreach for them for any particulars that you experience as not only the student at National School District and a parent, but also any kind of additional requirements you may need for being an English learner parent in this district. And so, and then the last goal was added on as a result of our dashboard. It's called, it's the ELA grade level achievement. This is a requirement now in the LCAP that when students are performing in the red category, it is required that our LCAP reflect there clearly and specifically an action and a goal that we will be using to address that performance. And in this case, we're looking at providing additional tier two English language arts support services through our LAS and our impact teacher at two school sites whose students scored in the red category under English Language Arts for ESFAC. And that is Lincoln Acres and Olive Wood. So some of these are the steps. These are not fleshed out, but I wanted to present it for anybody. The new LCAP template did not require all these levels, but you can see all the many steps that are incorporated in just this action. So some of the components such as, you know, collaboration time for teachers to plan around EL instructional needs, making sure that we continue to fund our EL coordinator. We have, I am proud to say that we were blue in English learner progress. And so we're continuing in many of the schools. So we're starting to see this impact with our English learners. Make sure that we're providing English classes to help parents that are English learners, help their students with their schoolwork, because we know it is critical. They are the children's first teachers, and we want that deep partnership with our parents. And so we also have required testing components from the state if you're an English learner. And so we want to make sure that we have the right individuals that are providing those services for our kids. The second goal is focused on increased academic proficiency for our students, really kind of framed around the concept of multi-tiered systems of support so that we can have multiple levels and multiple pathways for our students to access grade level content and, and also build those other skills that we know are critical when they hit the workforce. Communication, collaboration, problem solving. All of these aim towards workforce success also. And this covers state priority areas one, two, four, and seven. And some of the big areas around the actions are ensuring that we are monitoring our student progress through data analysis. Our instructional planning driven by data analysis, providing them that broad course of study, the expanded learning opportunities that you'll see in the, as we discussed in several meetings with our expanded learning opportunities with reach and our inter sessions and our inter mural sports. Making sure that we have appropriate and aligned targeted resources, interventions, and extensions. If you're an accelerated student through our multi-tiered system of support. And then in action five, you will see, again, this is another area that we want to make sure with these particular schools that we are giving that little added extra touch. And we are going to be placing universal design for learning for academic achievement here towards our students with disabilities. We, this following schools, Las Palmas, Central, Olive, Olive Wood, Lincoln Acres, and Ira Harbison did score in the red for our students with disabilities. So we are looking at ways to ensure that they have greater access and opportunity to grade level academic standards. And that will be placed in this whole area with additional resources. Some of the steps that are included in this goal, as you can see, are some of those broad courses studies. As was mentioned by Dr. Brady, the animation, which integrates real world learning with writing and creativity. We make sure that we have a monitoring of data with an additional direct support with our MTSS coordinators and our instructional assistants. We have our district resource teachers in this goal who are going out into classrooms and supporting and partnering with our teachers so that we continue to provide those additional benefits to kids who may need more nuanced services. And then we also are looking at ensuring that we have, you know, consistent management throughout the school day and that we have a social emotional regulation. And so we are putting some integrated student study teams that look at both academics and behavior to make sure that we understand the root cause of students, of potential issues. Goal three is focused on our family and parent engagement. This covers state priority one, three, five, and six. And the actions in this goal really look for partnerships toward student achievement and some of the resources I spoke of earlier. Ensuring that we have community and basic resources. We know that we have a group of our families that need that additional support so that we can make sure our kids are getting to school and they're getting to school ready to learn. Learning environments across the classroom, making sure that students have multiple access and pathways to resources they may need, like assisted devices or bands if they get a little, you know, jumpy and squirrely. And so making sure that we have those things. In addition, we have a partnership with our San Diego County Office of Ed, as well as National University, to start doing outreach to our families prior to becoming officially our students through our pre-nail to third grade program. We're doing the Little Red Schoolhouse with childcare and early intervention, as well as starting to partner with deeper levels with our community agencies to get to our, our families sooner so that we can get support to our kids who may need it. And then, of course, we're very committed to making sure we do not have a digital divide. We know that it is tomorrow that technology is innovating, as I shared in the previous presentation, at a very fast rate. We want to make sure our students not only have the resources they need, but they know, they learn how to adapt to that ever-changing environment, because that is their future. And here are some of the steps that are included in those actions. And for example, device refresh, making sure they have new devices that work. They're not helping us if they're sitting piling up in a corner in a classroom. And that we have expertise in areas of early education and outreach for our parents, that we have partnerships with our South Bay Community Services Groups to make sure that we're addressing anything that could be preventing families from getting our kids to school soon. We will be bringing in youth development specialists who partner really personally with the families who, who students may be struggling to get to school on time and consistently. And then our last goal for this twenty four, twenty seven LCAP is really looking at the multi-tiered integrated framework around social emotional learning and positive behavior. This is priority one, three, six, eight. As we all know, since the pandemic, this has really hit a very high need across the nation. And so we want to make sure that we put those resources at school where kids are spending the bulk of their day. So the two actions really focus on specialized and highly qualified staff and making sure that we have a continuum of services or social emotional behavioral components as well as we monitor it. And so here are some of the areas that we are looking at in our steps to provide this. We have, we have PBRAS schools, as you heard. We spent, we spent time in making sure that our, our teams can collaborate and plan for that. We want to make sure our student study teams continue to go. And sometimes that goes beyond the day and the teachers and the staff that stay can, are able to support through time cards. We have our behavioral supports that we put in place between our IAs and outside agencies that come in to help. And as well as our counselors, who have been a critical piece, who monitor kind of the social emotional health of our schools and design systems around personalized addressing of them at each of the schools. So that is kind of the overview of the twenty three, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty seven LCAP goal. Again, I thank you for your time.
And the presence of the public hearing, were there, was there any public comment?
No.
Just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
Members of the board, we have presented the comments.
I need to say on some of the pages, some of the things are missing.
The presence of the public.
Oh, yes.
Especially when Professor Nina.
I just wanted to highlight the fact that I know that our students have struggled with mental health coming back from the pandemic. And that is something that we have had many resources for, not just our students, but our, our staff and our families. And I'm glad that we continue to provide those services, not just with our counselors. So we have the FRC, we have Carisolus, and whatever this stuff, whatever this stuff. So I want to ensure that we are providing the, continue to provide that information to our, our families. If we can continue to provide that via maybe each jar and so on and so forth. Because I, I can't remember where I was at. And they were not, you know, they were not aware that we were providing that service. And also it was a community member, may not have been a parent of ours. And I'm like, oh no, we have that service. So if we can make that at the forefront all the time, so that way we don't have to have them go without.
Agreed.
And we are, at the time when we have it available, they may not need it. But when they need it, we can make sure that they have it available to them. Because it's not always that, that they need it. And we want to, for maybe at the time, they, they might be embarrassed. So if they have it, they can reference it later on. I just want to make sure that we have that service available and they can utilize it at any given time. Carisolus is on, I know that are on our website, but if we can just periodically just send it out and remind our staff that this is something that we have. And highlight some of that, the items that are available. And I, I know that our teachers are overwhelmed, but if we could just kind of bullet point some of the items, just to kind of, I guess, a little key in the bottom, like give them just some ideas. Because I know our counselors do a wonderful job supporting our, our students, our families and so on. But just to kind of give it a little bit of a push, because we don't want our families to go without. Because we don't know what we don't know. And if our parents are embarrassed to ask, we don't know how to support them. Because oftentimes, I was at a conference, but oftentimes those high achieving students are the ones that also need that support. So we can do that. So I'm glad that we're still providing that service. And what is the conversation?
Yes, and I wanted to compare with you. The way we have been slowly building as many outreach for that reason that you just shared as we can. And so we also have our partnership with the National City Police Department. And we have a, a handoff where if an incident occurs, let's say outside of school hours and it's one of our students, and we think it has potential for impact, you know, in school, we actually get a notification for that. So that has been an add-on for that reason. We have the FRC as well as working with our student support coordinator services, individual Ms. Garcia, actually doing more of the outreach and actually integrating more with them. Because as we just recently experienced with floods, we wanted to make sure we got the voucher out to all the students and right, right families to get them. So we agree that we want to keep building those outreach and communication, because the way it reaches people can differ depending on. We're excited with our expansion with our partners, especially our local community ones. So for example, those youth development individuals coming out of South Bay Community Services, BCS, will actually be getting better outreach and it's much more personal and much more addressing some of the families that may be carrying some embarrassment around it, because we want to make sure they get what they need. So one hundred percent guaranteed. I'm, I agree.
With mental health, it's not an easy subject to speak about. And oftentimes it's, it's, it's embarrassing and, and people are not willing to speak about it. And it's a topic that I, it's constantly spoken about in any type of meeting. It's a topic that is a constant, it's a constant. And so we have, have to have a lot of outreach. And so the more we speak about it as a positive to be able to have that conversation, the more willing the families and the students are, will have that dialogue. So if we can have, you know, during this topic. And we just don't want to have that misconception that we are not providing that support.
No, and I agree. Part of it is addressing some of those cultural components that may be driving this. Yeah, but one in five, so although it has the stigma, it's really not that a common to have that, an early intervention, just like anything else, and make a really small problem go away before it gets too big.
Let's see, the sound of that.
Thank you, Dr. Grant. For presenting this, it's very encouraging to see it. I know how many people would be brief and just presenting things for that. If I ask you, because I don't know, I mean, I want to see it somehow reflected in here. And the fact that you are mentioning dashboards. And I know dashboards are for measuring and for metrics and we look forward to that, you know, the goal for that. So the fact, the fact that I know the students on the general ed portion of the school, so it's on a classroom, then usually the, the special education student low, low, score lower in how you include in the RAV and beyond, the fact that they're going to be validated for an English learner. And they are, as I said, my, it's our English learners and how it incorporated in, in the inclusion of, in this metrics. And the goal that they have there on the task and how we look forward to also reclassify. Your classification metrics that you raised this goals now, how are we going to look at, how does it fit on this one? Because I, I see it several times that you mentioned it, and that's exciting. And how are we going to look forward to include the type of population in the classification metrics? You mind, you got my point?
Yes, thank you. So we, we're very fortunate that data monitoring software and it has, it's like everything else, has evolved and become much more sophisticated. So we do partner with Opera, which is a data point and can personalize it for us. So for example, we asked them to create a downpour to see, I mentioned that MTSS framework. And I asked them, can you look at the interventions we're doing? And, you know, the, the way would you need them and show us the impact. But the impact in terms of social emotional data, the ESFAC data, this data, the amount of time they're in there. And so we can get very nuanced to see kind of trends and patterns around that. Obviously with the, the data, yes, I know that students with disabilities have, have historically, you know, been outpaced by general education students, but they are general education students first. And so we have to get to the root cause as to what that is doing. We start with the data. So we'll be looking at the dashboard. We'll be monitoring the amount of time they have access to grade level standards and how it's getting differentiated and getting to them. Because you, you can't, if you've never ridden a bike and you, the test is on the bike, then you're at a disadvantage already. So we're going to be looking at those types of analysis. We do have those data discussions that the principals will be looking at it at these particular schools. Those will have to be school goals in addition to what they're focusing on simply because it is something that we need to, to move forward on and present.
Yeah, thank you. The, um, the reason I'm asking this is because I know by several special appearance that they are behind, because they were severely impacted by the academic loss. And this is exciting to see that they're working on both to that part. And in the receiving of that one, and we have to go into another language to, and to develop their home language, which is really exciting to see, you know, including the parents on the one. Because they, they, they play a crucial role on this language acquisition. So I would like to see the rates on the future probably.
Yeah.
But based on this, it looks promising that they're going to be emerging from and, and looking for, for our classification for that population of students. It will be exciting to see what happens, what comes to be. Thank you.
Yeah, well, we think the same. So one of the metrics that are required will be reclassification rates with students with disability. Dual identified, which are English learner and students with disability, and then those that are English only. No, we tease that out.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, that graduation this past June, I spoke to a parent who had a student in a specialist class at Rancho. And he was so pleased with the education, he said, compared to the previous school that his child was at. There was just huge difference by leaps and bounds. And I want to make sure that I give kudos to the teachers there.
Yeah, our teachers are amazing. So not just at Rancho, but across the board. So it's not an easy task, but they never give up. So I agree. Kudos.
So a recent, our most recent board meeting, we approved a, a couple of purchases of resources for testing, practice, and exposure for students. So thank you again for looking out for those things for our students. Because honestly, like you said, you haven't ridden a bike before and then the test is on a bike, then you, you're already set up to fail. And, and we, we know that the standardized system is what we're stuck with. At this point, we need to do better by students. Because we also know that there are plenty of students for whom standardized testing is not going to show them, show us what they've learned. It's its own fight, but I appreciate the fact that we are knowing that we have this system in place that you are looking for ways to help our students with that.
I must agree with you, but I've been saying this, that we are, standardized testing is here. And we are addressing it, but it's also, we need to recognize that schools and humans are complex systems within themselves and that we, we have to be cognizant that there are multiple stories and multiple themes that come, emerge from the data. And I look forward to being able to present that to the board, because we never want to find ourselves where we only tell one story and disregard, you know, all the other thoughts and themes of the story that's being told. So thank you for recognizing that, because our, our children are amazing also. And what they're doing despite some of the challenges that they have in front of them, it needs to be applauded.
Well, my spouse's family has dyslexia running through. My father-in-law, his, is it all, all three of his siblings, his dad. And so a standardized test was a nightmare. But turn around and ask them a question. And they can give you, you know, full, complete answer, well thought out, articulated, because it's not a, it's not a comprehension issue. It's a barrier issue for them. And so, like I said, I'm thankful that we are at least within the system we're given, trying to meet needs of students. I do have some thoughts and/or questions, because so, um, we know you have steps you have to go through. And part of that included reaching out to our community and community partners. So when it comes to surveys and, and feedback opportunities, how can you give us a, just a brief overview of responsiveness? Because of course, then we base the LCAP off of the input that we've been provided. So could you just do that's number one?
A. Okay. Yes, so when I do send out, so you look at our demographics, I mean, I would always love more. The more important response, the better. And so, but I generally calculate a confidence interval level. I just go on the website and I put in a sample size based off our population. And I look to see, you know, where can I get a ninety to a ninety-five percent confidence interval level? Meaning to say, what is the probability if I got a hundred more that it would change or that it would match this? And so depending if I don't get enough, if I'm not comfortable, I usually go for about ninety-five, then I will resend out the survey. But this year I, I received, you know, sufficient. I, I have been getting actually more than I normally do. And I think I I have been getting actually more than I normally do, and I think um one of the things that I try to share with people is that. Um, this is your opportunity, your vote, your, you know, ability to give input, and although we may not promise exactly what it is. Um, it might fall into a trend that we haven't considered that we need to bring into into space.
Well, and because one of the things we also know is that very often the people who are able to gather together face to face for these things. Are often the people who are ready, are giving voice because they're they're able to come and be present, so. Making sure that we have more voices than the the ones who are able to show up regularly um. At school or meetings or for those things is important, um, have you found something that is more effective? Or like the a correlation between I'm getting this information when I when I send this out in this way?
Well, two things, one is probably unhealthy stalking, I keep getting my voice, uh, phone call, please fill it out, please fill it out. Um, and then when you fill it out, you don't get it anymore, so there's a motivator. But outside of that, you know, um, the one thing that did come out of the pandemic is um virtual. That we are often able to reach um audiences virtually, sometimes. Not, but that's just another venue where parents can, I mean, I've actually done meetings and they're at work. And I can see a work environment behind and they're on their phone, but they they have the opportunity to give input. Into, you know, whatever plan I'm working on at that point. Is that what that was out, that answered the question?
You know, because we we can send things out and we have no idea what, like what people are actually responding to or. With like, how many times that we've sent something on on Class Dojo and and I might hear a, oh, I never saw that. And so what's being effective and what's not matters as well.
I would say the other piece, going back to our, you know, our our family here at Nashville, is our teachers and our sites. Um, they they help a lot, they share it, they share it in their communication, the principals share it. And it's, you know, this collective effort, and I think I'm, I'm sure it's not just my phone calls, I'm sure they have a tremendous impact. And um, you know, I think that that's been a very positive influence, and so each year, they're not required to do it, but they do it. And I really appreciate it because it's another venue that you can provide input. Um, and you know, if you work a graveyard graveyard shift, you can do it at your lunch, you know. Um, and so, uh, and and I do always, uh, another piece that I put in is a lot of open-ended questions in the survey that. And uh, people sweet their heart, and so and I, whatever language they want to do it, and then we take it from there. And um translated and to make sure that their voice is heard also. Trustee Alves.
Um, we had meetings here, this is this is Brady, we're with our educators and. I think if you were in two of us, I'm not sure. But uh, we did discuss a lot about this, that was one of a big topic that we had, we spoke about it. This percentage on our special children.
How full did you say? Identified, are you asking?
Yes.
Um, identification rate or how many students?
Well, what is the percentage?
We have a seventeen percent identification rate, I'd actually off the top of my head. Um, I'm in my head, I don't want to shoot out a number, I I can get you the exact number, I prefer to do that, but um. You know, most of our students, when I can see the picture from the survey, uh, we service mostly um. Largest percentage would be students with speech um needs, and then um second would be um. Special specialized academic instruction, we're beginning to resource additional tutoring, but I can't. I I wanna say fifty percent or more with speech, but I'd like to give you the better, uh, clearer numbers, I'm happy to do that in the board panel.
And I think that district is doing a great job in what we're doing, helping them. And and the our educators that are really have their heart and the passion out of that, that's great, yeah, thank you. Uh, Dr. Brady.
Now, I know we did a little bit of this overview during the LCAP committee, but just a reminder to the board that um. The LCAP's input sessions start somewhere around March, I think, January, um. And Dr. Craft does go out to the deep deep hack and gets face-to-face input from Black Group, she goes to D-LAC. She meets with um CSEA, she meets with NCETA, she does a survey. She has virtual meetings where she comes to the parent roundtable, as trustee Alves was just mentioning. Um, so parents, some of them show up, three, and OPTA, I think you went to the PTA, that's me just remember, but so. They have multiple opportunities at leadership meetings, she comes and gets information from the leaders, so you can participate in person. At one or multiple of those meetings, you can participate online, in real time, you can participate in a survey, you can participate in a roundtable if you want.
And I'm happy to.
Oh, and then the committees, everybody that comes to gather, kind of culminating all.
Be very open to additional ideas, and parents have left me, that's some of the shifts I've made um. In the the feedback form, I've left me, you know, can you do, you know, a later reading after I get off work? I have some accompaniment for our parents that do work.
Yes, yes.
The difficult.
They want, they they should have an input in their children's education to help us to be stronger.
You had just mentioned um our uh like our English language learners.
Mm-hmm.
And so, one of my questions always, for any of us working with with kids, we know. Um, Spanish, English, and for our community, Tagalog speaking is very common here in Southern San Diego. But I think we came back with, what was it, twenty-eight or something different, possible languages spoken uh by families in our community. Um, and in our schools, and so um. My encouragement there, um, my husband. Was one of those kids who sat in a classroom and had no idea what was being said to him. Because he moved to South Africa, and so English was of no use to him there. Um, and he has commented other time, like. In the married thirty-two years, we've had this conversation, but um he's commented about the difficulty of sitting in a classroom. Where there even, you know, teachers could could speak English, but he was not, like, he was not allowed. That was, it was that era of not allowing, um. For our students for whom we can't truly interact. Um. My encouragement, I guess, and question a bit, is how are we moving up on best practices? Because for students who are coming to us and speaking Spanish. And plenty of us who speak at least a little, if, and those who are very fluent and completely fluent in both languages. We have here speaking Tagalog, we have teachers who speak, who speak that as well. We don't necessarily have a classroom, we have classrooms at every site where they're speaking Farsi or where they're speaking Mandarin or what. So I know it's embedded in our credentials, I know that, but. How are we providing best skill sets for our teachers to continue being able to effectively. Reach out and help those students communicate and not be lost in our. School system, and of course with that, their families and and their parents, um. It impacts the classroom, what a child is unable to communicate. It obviously impacts that child, um, but it also isolates that child in real ways. And so, um. All of that.
So um Ms. Benitez uh was our Yale coordinator, has spent quite a bit of time this year to gather data. Of and work with collaborative teams to develop new kind of approaches, and you're right. Um, you you, there's no possible way a teacher can speak twenty-eight languages and reach um. Um, you know, the student who speaks Pashto, uh, which doesn't even have a written uh component, so. Um, these strategies are known, uh, the curriculum as well as the strategies that are also supported by two of our teachers. Who are funded by Title III, focused specifically on serving English learners. Um, go out and they they coach and they support, um, they interact in the classroom with the teachers. Um, helping to develop instructional routines that will begin to give the student access. And of course, depending, as you know, on the student's language acquisition level, uh, access may be simply being receptive. You know, in the beginning, but or if they're further, you know, developed in their language acquisition, they may be able to start, you know. Acquiring some of the more academic pieces, so we have a newcomer uh programming plan that will be implemented. We have our DRTs uh who are targeting and specialized in language acquisition as well as the standards for language acquisition. Um, going into the classrooms, for our parents, uh, we do provide um, you know, translation services. Um, our in-house translation services, obviously for our Spanish, which is our most dominant language. Um, but um, we do have a contract with an outside agency who can provide any language. So that our parents at any point, should they request, they have actually had the realization, um. Can have that translation service so that they can participate, um, because we do have actually a few very unique. Languages here, um, that with very small population, but regardless, they still have access. And so we continue to have, you know, components at the schools where they can come. Um, and all we have to do is ask the principal or notify them or the teacher. Um, and they would be able to have any kind of a support systems in terms of documentation or language if they feel like they they aren't getting access. Sir?
Yes, yes.
Dr. Brady.
I just want to add on that, uh, we are looking at some very uh exciting new software that's out right now.
That's true.
Uh, where teachers can send an email or text, or sometimes a text or an uh. Uh, for a parent in English, and the parent can sign up to receive that, whatever language they speak, so if they speak Korean, the teacher would send the text. In English and it would be received in Korean, the parent would then respond in Korean and the teacher would receive it in English. And so it's really, there's a lot of really great um. Uh, like new emerging software that we are currently looking at right now, one in particular. I'm looking at the details of the contract, have to see if it's something feasible, so. It's on the horizon, it's gonna really open doors, uh, you go to Google and you select your language and you speak into it in your language. It can in real time speak with a slight delay to the person in the language that you want it to be received in. And that's just right on your regular Google app, so we can practice later if anyone wants to see it, but it's pretty exciting, it's not perfect. But it's really gonna help people not feel isolated like you mentioned.
Have the opportunity to open a door, you know. Trustee LaZarga.
Thank you, it's the final portion, I was reading the 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 item number of the agenda, this is a three-year projection for the for the plan and. The for LCAP plan, but and we do have conversations every year, um, depending on the goals and how it's going. And he might explain it to us, it will be a sync work.
So um, the LCAP is a three-year plan because, you know, changing something constantly, um, you know, has not been effective. So it's a three-year plan and it's anchored around your goals, um, as well as your actions. Every year, um, at the annual update, I I present, um. We we have uh metrics, that's one of them I was speaking of, like students with disabilities, and if. Um, the metric doesn't show, well, if it's not moving in the right direction, then we have, and and sometimes it happens, you know. Um, then we have to come back and we reevaluate based on this practices, collaborating with our colleagues at. The county collabor- collaborated with experts possibly at the university, depending on what it is, and then that um. That annual update, I go out and I share with all those um educational partners also. Um, so that we're very transparent what we're doing and how we're progressing, and then they give feedback. Um, and based off that, we start formulating any shifts or a a redirection in those particular. Actions or steps to yield the the response, and um and the LCAP actually has. If the, if you've done this response, let's say two years, and it's it's not moving, we actually can say, we're gonna take that, it's a material difference. We're gonna take that funding and not use it for that anymore, reallocate it, because it's not yielding what we want, so it's a very dynamic process. Alright, thank you.
My last question, I believe, for this section, um, you mentioned integrated uh student study teams.
Uh-huh.
And as trustee Ben Corcini had pointed out, regarding mental health, um, we we know full well that academics. Can have an influence on behaviors, and behaviors definitely have an influence on our academics, they are, they they. If you're having, if you're having an awful day, it can affect your behavior, which means you're having trouble paying attention to class. And that means that that day is difficult for you, like, it it's its own cycle.
Mm-hmm.
So for your integrated student study teams, um. What would a standard team look like, like who is part of that input cycle for meeting the needs of that student? Um, and how, but. How can we enhance their effectiveness?
So, um, just depending on the child, so this may, uh, uh, let's say a child is having, um. Breakdowns in the class, uh, their struggle in reading, um, and so the support providers that are. Would take the child or are servicing the child would definitely be involved in the student studying team, so. Um, you probably have the counselor um in there, if not the psychologist, a an individual that that is kind of their area of expertise. Um, you may have a language art specialist or a resource teacher, depending on the student and the situation. So again, another uh um individual that is kind of more targeted and specialized in the area that the student may be struggling. Obviously, an administrator who is well aware of the data and the data profile of that student, and at at minimum, and of course, the parent. Um, and um, if they're older, sometimes you bring in the student depending on the situation. If they need to be part of the solution or if it's something, you know, else, and so at minimum, those would be teams that we would wrap. Services around, if we think it's additional factors, uh. Home, you know, uh, situations, we may bring in our student services that may be looking at ways to, you know, connect the family with basic services. And that type of situation, so each, it's by name by need, each student kind of generates um their support team. And we try to provide that with them.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Brady.
Thank you.
Alright, then unless there's others to add, that closes public hearing at this time. Item nine B is twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school plan for student achievement for our schools. Prove all of this item will allow school sites to implement the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five single plan for student achievement. According to California Ed Code, section sixty-four zero zero one A, Dr. Craft, anything to add? Questions from the.
No. Okay, I have a motion to approve by trustee LaZarga, a second by trustee Ben Porcasamiera, please vote.
And it passes unanimously.
Alright, item nine C to amend CT three zero four five with YMCA of San Diego County, do I have a motion?
No, wait a second, thank you, uh, Dr. Craft, anything to add?
Yes, one sentence.
So the board will see that there are two items on here, so I just want to make sure provided clarity. The first item was the contract that you just recently amended. Um, after you amended the contract, we even notified that we actually came in to additional funding. Uh, the funding is more restrictive and don't have to be expensed out prior to September thirtieth. And um and and only can be utilized for intercession as well as summer, and so if you choose to approve this contract. Uh, amend, which would allow us to use the, what you're proving is allowing us to use those funds to expend first. We would um, if you're to expense out those funds for our current program starting tomorrow. Uh, that we're doing with our expected. Uh that we're doing with our expected learning uh department, I mean uh programming and for Reach for Joy.
Second. Specifically for this summer.
Yes, we we believe that it will be uh expensed out. It was about five hundred thousand and um we are in a capacity with the waitlist. So we will have to expand next year with some equipment, which was very exciting. Um but um it is, it will be. Youngest of the people. Um and then the second item on this list is the Y M C A. And that is uh for next year. And that has been built in. Uh uh we now have a single standing um contract with Y M C A. Um took us and as well as other districts uh opportunity with these new expanded learning funding. And so now we can utilize both ACES after-school uh learning funding that we've had historically. As well as ELOP, expanded learning opportunity programs to do our after-school as well as our intercession in summer. Um our current ACES program does not allow us to spend on um after-school and intercession, so we want to be able to integrate both.
Alright, so item nine C is the amendment regarding more funds. At this point in time to be expensed during summer programming. Okay. Uh trustee Ben Corcasini.
So the financial impact is is increasing. Correct?
Um no, it's giving us access. So right now, Reach can only draw from the ACES funding and the ELOP funding. This is more restrictive money that then would extend the length of those other two funding sources. So we wouldn't change. On the amount of services. Money in the current contract for ACES.
Because it says here that's a point from the S R.
Right, for example, um we can use ELOP uh for things like the basketball court. To be used after school. So it wasn't used during the Reach for Joy program because we had S R funds, then we could then re-allocate those funds to a different project. For the district.
I just want to understand because. It says we would, we're increasing it using the new. So five hundred twenty-three thousand eight hundred. We're increasing it by that much? So.
Maybe this reason. Allows it.
Because we're amending it?
It allows. It allows for us to access up to that. About five hundred twenty-three thousand eight hundred dollars from a different funding source. So it's not an increase.
So the, if I can step in, the the total um bill or total balance of what we would spend would stay the same. But adding this funding source, which just came, it kind of dropped out of the sky at the end of the year for us. We weren't expecting it. Uh it wasn't uh, you know, previewed to us by the state. We received it at the end of the year. So adding it as a funding source for the summer will allow us to use that money this summer. Which is gonna extend the life of the money that we are going to use for that piece. And now we can use that, like you were saying, for a basketball court or for uh more playground equipment next year.
So it is increasing the dollar amount that we are available to.
Yes, yes. It increases our total amount that we can use in ELOP for other sources. Because it encompasses this new money for something we're going to spend ELOP on.
So the final and the financial impact is increasing. Is what I meant. So I would, I think it's better is that the financial impact is equated to services. And so what we're giving the kids is staying the same. Of what we're spending on them is staying the same. What we're doing is now we have another purse. That we can dip into first. Um to give the same exact services. So we aren't increasing our services for the kids. We just have a different um way of thing.
I think we're, I I think I got it. Um. So we had ACES. And we have more need than we can certainly, than we can spend the days. So we said, well, we have this other funding source that could augment it. It's ELOP. Would you approve us to use some of our ELOP to expand services? For the Reach program? You said yes. Now this new funding source also allows us, and we can say, okay, never mind. Use this money instead of this money. We're gonna take this money and use it potentially for something else. It may be next year that we have that money sitting and we ask you to amend the ACES. Uh or the Reach program to add to the ACES that you have there. And I think this new. Um or to increase the amount of money available to ACES. But I think the difference is we're not giving that additional money directly to Reach. We're swapping. Which purse you can take the money from and then we're taking back that other money to use for something at the district side. So this is a. A contract specifically for Reach. We're not adding to their bottom line, but it does add to our bottom line. For ELOP. It's just not all of our ELOP is going to Reach.
Or to the Y M C A. Clear? Because. It it all, it all, it it seems like if we're increasing the uh available funds. That's why I was a bit confused, as if they have additional five hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred available to them. That's why I want to make sure. So it was because financial impact, they're allowed of the general fund to utilize S R um. Money. Of that amount.
Correct, and and technically, we do have an additional five hundred and twenty-three thousand available to us. Um because of this money that was given to us by the state, but it will um. Like uh it's. It's really gonna free up, so the services this summer, the programming is not changing. This money came in late, so we wouldn't even be able to add programming that could spend all that that fast. So it's coming in and we are gonna use it before it expires. It's coming in with an expiration date. It's like somebody gave us like a jug of milk. The day before it expires and we better drink it fast or make something with milk in it. So that's what kind of what we're doing here. We were given the the funds. We're gonna use it for something that we can use it for. That's this summer. We were going to spend ELOP money for that. And we're still probably gonna have to uh add some ELOP. We're going to, but now because of this. Gift, uh in essence, we don't have to, which now we get to use that. Five hundred twenty-three thousand dollars with ELOP money on something else in the fall or the spring before it expires next year.
It doesn't say in lieu of.
Um that would be, yeah, in lieu of would be a way of putting it.
Well, but I also want to make sure that. Not holding yourself. Right. So basically, we are, all this would allow us to do is to access those funds. The board would approve that we can access those funds and then. When the bill, when we get invoiced by the Y M C A, we would then say, Rena. Pay it through the S R three. And then she says, okay, all that money is gone, but you still have a balance remaining. At that point, we've made a decision whether to use ACES or ELOP. Depending again on restrictions and which will get carried over. There are multiple decisions that would be made as a result of that. So if ACES notifies us and says, no, you can't carry over any funds. We're gonna spend that. If they, if ELOP says you have to be under a certain percentage, we'll spend that. We don't know yet. Uh nothing has come, so it's probably not the case, but what we do know is this S R money needs to be expensed by September thirtieth. And we have the need, we've all, the program remains the same. We're still spending what you approved last time. We just have a different. Um way, a different uh ways, funding source that you would, if you approved tonight, would allow us to do it. Uh the Y M C A can't spend more than what you approved last time because that's what the board approved. And they won't need to, but it allows us to use these funds to pay for what we already agreed to. I just want to make sure.
Okay.
We're not taking more than what we've agreed upon.
No, no. Okay. Any other clarifying questions? Alright, then I have a motion to amend contract three zero four five by trustee Sarmiento and a second by trustee Avalos. Please vote.
I don't pass this unanimously.
Item nine D to approve C T four one eight four with Y M C A of San Diego County. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve. Second.
And Doctor Kraft? And you already spoke to this. Do we have questions? Um regarding. The approval of the next fiscal years. Y M C A Reach. Contract. Doctor Brady?
Just curious if we need to add S R as one of the funding sources since we start fall break in September and we may have left over money. Would the board consider another motion to add? S R so that. They could choose, because there's only two funding sources on this one, just in case we don't finish on this one.
Okay. Um trustee Avalos, are you willing to um? Amend your approval noting a third funding source of S R three?
Yes.
And trustee Ben Corcasinera, a second. Thanks for that amendment. Okay. Um. I have trustee LaZarga, please.
Yeah, thank you. You thought uh something that I'll observe here in the description. You thought mission services are gonna be during the plan or during uh before?
In a session.
Day of session. For that. Fall break, winter break, summer session. Yeah, for all students. Oh, yes, okay, yes.
Thank you.
That's why we increased the funds. Based off of the. Yeah, because the name enrichment seems like it's gonna be during. The middle of the class now. So, but I wanted to make sure.
Okay. Any other questions? Then we have an uh approval with amendment including S R three funds by trustee Avalos and a second by trustee Ben Corcasinera. Please vote.
I don't pass this unanimously.
Right. Item ten is human resources. Ten A to approve updated administrative salary schedule. Uh do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. A second motion.
Alright, Doctor Kepin.
Um last month, uh well, not last month. June eleventh. Um we did a contract change for Stephen Sanchez to move from Educational Services. Comprehensive State Literacy Grant to Extended Learning Opportunity Coordinator of Extended Learning Opportunities. We went ahead and added that title to the uh new salary schedule. And then you also approved a job description for the Executive Director of Information Technology. And we have placed that on this new salary schedule as well. So the request is to approve a new salary schedule adding those to job.
Do we have any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to request in the future that we have this a little bit larger. It's so hard to read this little tiny font.
That's definitely, it's not as small as well.
Yeah. I tell my students there's a grandma who, now I'm officially grandma, so officially. Has to be. Alright, any other question? Okay, we have a motion to approve by trustee Ben Corcasinera, a second by trustee Avalos. Please vote.
I don't pass this unanimously.
Alright, item ten B is to approve C T four two zero five with Beverly Hayes as administrator support. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A second. Doctor Kepin?
This is to approve the contract with Beverly Hayes, uh as you know, she's retired administrator. Any sort of support that we may need within our schools. Um or anything here at the district office would like to put on the contract. Any kind of administrative support or. That we. Do the couple. So one example is last year, um we had her open up a rancher for a couple of months and she did a great job until we found an administrator. So that's one example. Another example could be if an administrator is out on leave, um they could, she could cover for that administrator.
Uh any questions for more? Alright, then I have a motion to approve C T force two zero five from trustee Ben Corcasinera with a second by trustee Avalos. Please vote.
I don't pass this unanimously.
Alright, item eleven is business services. Item eleven A, a discussion of facilities. Doctor Burke?
Yeah, it's just a uh a brief update for our monthly uh facilities and access, facility safety and access. Uh conversation and work. Um today, I'd just like to provide an update that the rooms that were impacted by the flooding.
Twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school. And opening the hearing for that proposed budget. Uh as part of this hearing, Doctor Burke will provide a brief overview.
I will try to be brief. I have twice as many slides as uh. Doctor Kraft did, so I'll have to try and spend less than half as much time. Look, I'm already passing one right there. Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, a positive approval process. That's the timeline. You can reference it as needed, but it goes the the uh, the districts have to pass it before July first. And uh get it to the county, county superintendent's review and then approve. Looking at estimated actuals, this is just a quick comparison to the last time I was up here presenting on budget. Versus today, how it how it's different, how estimated actuals at the end of the year. And you'll see that we were expecting as of uh the data, at the end of January, we were expecting to spend more thirteen. Almost thirteen and a half million more dollars this year. Um than we brought in. Uh we really tried to be as responsible as we can, hit the brakes everywhere we can, or at least limit spending. Um and the result is we are now uh haven't been able to realize some savings. And we're only decreasing the budget this year by uh close to seven million. That's for twenty-three, twenty-four, the year that's ending. Again, we really tried to um be as responsible as possible and and um. Be conservative of our spending and and we did give an extra uh bump in our fu- in our fund balance as a result. The budget cycle, as you know, uh it's it's a, we always have our feet in two budget years or three budget years, depending on the time of year. Right now, we're looking at the twenty-three, twenty-four budget and we're looking at the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So we're at this window of time where we've got our 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 minds in both worlds. Budget adoption must happen before July first and you know, first interim is December. Second interim March and then uh audited actuals is actually the year after. So when we get un-audited actuals this September, we'll be looking at the twenty-three, twenty-four years. So we're always kind of in at least two years and thinking about the third. Uh this slide, as it says at the top, is from School Services of California. Uh a respected partner of ours. It's referenced statewide. Uh and that's just some general background information. If you want to dig deeper, it's there. I would just point out that um things are trending up. My last budget report, I was. Uh you know, conveying some concerns about the state budget, about the federal budget. Things are trending up generally as far as the federal budget goes and how the federal economic situation is. Uh but in California, we still have our own uh challenges as as they're listed there and as we've seen in many other places. Um we get our money in California primarily from the big three. You'll see that right there, personal income, corporation and sales tax. So those are the big three. That's where most of the California budget comes from. You'll see that the budget's been kind of trending along, you know, just moving along, bumping up year by year by year over the last twenty years, twenty-five years. And then that spike is pandemic induced. So you see that that the state budget really, really skyrocketed uh as a result of that. And then now has come down and the come down feels painful sort of because we got used to the way things were. And but really, it's just getting back in line with where it was kind of supposed to be. So you can be confident that this is not any dramatic like. End times recession or depression or something like that. Uh you know, we're facing a challenge, but we're really normalizing is a good way to look at that. So we're back to governor's budget. Um we talked about what the COLA was looking. So we're back at the governor's budget. Uh, we talked about what the COLA was looking about, looking like. And, uh, the governor has, you know, announced that it's a 1.07% COLA that we are targeting here in California. That's pretty far different. If you see over there, that was when we built last, the budget year that we're in right now. We have to use what we think is going to be the COLAs. The, the state tells us, they tell the county, the county tells us what COLAs to expect. And we start building, building them into our multi-year projections. So we're using, the, the county gave us new projections for the next three years and we're using them in this year's budget. We'll show you that in a little bit. But they told us last year they expected the 3.94%. Due to unforeseen things, it came in at 1.07%. That's a huge change for what we're expecting in terms of revenues. So how does that play out? So that's how it plays out over three years is on that left side. The forecasted COLA that we were told we were going to get was at 2.3 mil for this year coming up. And it's really coming in at 628,000. It's a really significant change, especially when we've been building and working with the expectation that would be one thing to then all of a sudden have a change. And then when you look at the three-year budget picture, we were expecting over that three-year total. You'll see there at the bottom left, seven million, eighty two thousand dollars, and we're actually getting 1.9. So it's a huge shift in terms, and that's just from the one liter's COLA. That's not switching me out here. That's just this one incident right here is costing us that much money over the next three years. That's not really costing us, we're not having, giving it away. It was just, we're not getting it when we were expecting it. And you know how it is when you budget, as a family budget, you're expecting this much next month. All of a sudden it changes. That has an impact, okay? This is the cash flow. Since we're talking budgets and family budgets, we gotta worry about how we pay the bills. Uh, so we do have, uh, sufficient cash flow to pay our bills, to pay our employees on time throughout this whole year. We're not concerned that, you know, we're gonna be, because I, and I want to point out, the state is talking about deferrals. Deferrals is one of the budget solutions. The deferrals where they kind of like the, the Wimpy Burger, I'll gladly pay you Tuesday for a hamburger today. So give us the kids' results today and we'll give you the money next week. Although in deferrals from the state, it usually turns into next year or the year after that. They still expect us to get the results today, okay? So we're not in the boat yet where we're having to worry about cash flow. Uh, there are districts that will be. Fortunately, we are not one of them. Stored budget assumptions. So looking at, there's a lot of information. The last column on the right is this year's. So these are some of the numbers that have been used in the past in building our budget. Uh, some numbers come from the county, some numbers come from our own data sources like our enrollment, our ADA. And some are told to us by the state, like the yellow box. I want you to note that box. Like a rectangle, I guess, going back to 2017, 18, all the way to this year. If you look at COLA and funded COLA, sometimes they give us a bump. And when, during the pandemic, there were some changes, you'll see, they had some adjustments. But you'll see that whether they, the COLA that they intended to give or that they gave, kind of out of all those years, that 1.07 is by far the least, right? Other than that zero, which was pandemic induced. Um, so that 1.07, and it was actually brought back later on, you'll see. But, uh, that 1.07, so this is a challenging year for us, even just in consideration of just what the, uh, uh, increase to our revenues is. It's not as much as any other year in the, in the most recent seven years, uh, uh, you know, save for right in the middle of pandemic when other money was flooding in. I also want to point out these are the step and column costs, uh, that, those are important numbers and we'll talk about those in a few minutes. Last but not least, uh, I'm, I'm going to point out the pink boxes. See the pink boxes? That is the difference in just since, again, 2017, 18 wasn't that long ago. I mean, kind of was, but not really that long ago. And since then, look at CalPERS. That line, they weren't paying the employer. This is how much we pay, uh, as a district for somebody's retirement, okay? So when somebody's PERS, uh, employee, a, a, a PERS employee would be our classified team. And if they are, you know, uh, they have to pay their own nine, 10% out of their own paycheck into their retirement. The district used to pay 15% of that person's check on top of that nine, 10% that the person was paying, but now it's 27%. And it's, it's a huge number. That is a huge change. Same thing with ESSER, it hasn't risen as dramatically, but you know, four and a half, almost 5% extra. It's money that just is disappearing from our budget essentially because we're not getting it, we're not using it for students and the employees aren't getting it. So it's like, it's, it's, it's tough to take that. And it has an impact. That's real money, that's real percentages coming out of our budget, not going to employees or kids. Um, again, I encourage our labor partners to take that up with, uh, the state. I always encourage that. Yeah, revenues. This is, we're looking at the unrestricted budget and this is twenty three, twenty four and now twenty four, twenty five. So this is a new budget all the way to the right and then budget, the line, the column to the left has last year's, just so you have a point of comparison. Uh, you'll notice right away that our revenues drop, like we're, we're receiving less money. Even though we have a 1% COLA, it seems like we should get a little bit more money. But we are not because of the way the enrollment ADA, uh, i- is changing it. The way that our enrollment is going down is impacting that, okay? Expenditures is going up by a million dollars and this again is unrestricted. So you'll see in twenty three, twenty four, this year, our overall decrease in our fund balance for unrestricted is almost eight million. And it's twelve and a half million in the year coming up. So we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about that. Uh, fortunately, we do have the 3% in reserve is, is maintained. And we'll talk about the commitments as well in a minute. Restricted, same thing. This is our restricted funding. We're going to get into the details of what is that balance, that nineteen million in restricted funding? We'll show you that exactly what, what comprises that. But again, um, you'll see that our beginning fund balance next year is pretty close to this year and that, we'll talk about that in a minute. Uh, combined unrestricted and restricted. So if you see our revenues, oh, here's my pointer. We'll use it like that. So our revenues are ninety six million last year, eighty nine million this year. So almost ninety seven down to a low eighty nine. So again, that's a huge shift. It's like seven, almost seven million dollars in shift. And our expenditures went up by three million and both our expenditures for net last year that we're just ending and this year that we're expecting are well above how much money we're bringing in. Again, this is with some intention and, and under control. We're not spinning out of control and, and going to end up with no money at the end of the story. We have to spend this money. It's money that expires. As you heard about the ESSER funding, ELOP, we just had, uh, uh, you know, notification that ELOP is now going to expire every September the same way, um, the following September. So we have to, uh, make sure that we're keeping up and spending out that money before it expires. So those funds are going to be expended before, uh, they expire. And that is leading to us having, spending more in, in, more, more in a year than we are taking in in revenues. Our expenditures are higher than our revenues by a significant amount. That goes down, you'll see it go down when we look at the multi-year projection, okay? Okay, a couple more things. Here's the budget year assumptions. There's the, uh, multi-year projection. This is what, this shows what we kind of expect uh, over the next three years. So the next three years, we do expect our average daily attendance to continue to drop. I am going to detail how the attendance, uh, and funded attendance and enrollment all intertwined. And it, it's really tricky. I'm going to show you in a couple of slides how that they interplay with each other. But you'll notice, uh, that for, for, that it's still continuing to drop. Our enrollment, and that was done from a demographic study, uh, we are using, and it is tracking. That demographic study that was done several years ago by national or for national, it was tracking correctly. Even despite the pandemic, despite all the pressures, uh, the, the numbers of students predicted by that demographer, uh, several years ago, pre-pandemic is holding up and, and it's coming in, uh, pretty close to, uh, very accurate. So, uh, we are still rolling with those numbers. Um, the other thing I wanted to show you on this slide in particular, if you look at in the, the purple box, the COLA that I told you that we are getting, 1.07% is our increase of our revenue, that's our funds. Well, it doesn't even pay because our, for our step and column. Step and column, what that is, is our employees, when you get another year, you go down a, a row on, on your pay scale. If you get some professional training, you move over a column and you get extra pay. Or if you get a master's degree, you might move over a column and get extra pay. So that's called step and column. You'll see that our COLA amount, like the increases in our funds, does not even pay for step and column. So we are now paying more this year coming up, or planning to pay more this year to come, coming up, uh, than we did last year. And the difference is more than the extra money that we're going to get from the COLA. So we are going backwards before we even start the year. We're going backwards from where we are. And that's just a fact of life, fact of life. That's not uncommon. Most districts' COLAs, I mean, uh, step and column are between 1.5 and 2%. That is the industry standard and those are exact numbers for our district, so. This is also a multi-year projection. So again, the top row shows our revenues holding pretty steady. So eighty nine, eighty seven, eighty eight, it should be going up with these COLAs. Next year's COLA is again, is, uh, close to 3%. That should be almost a three million dollar increase. But you see that we went down. So again, this is declining enrollment in the rule of the averages that we're going to be discussing. But you'll see our net decrease starts giving under control. So now this, the fact that that row, they're in parentheses, means we're going down in money that year. So in twenty four, twenty five, we're spending seventeen and a half million dollars more than we're bringing in. Twenty five, twenty six, it goes down to about six million more than we're bringing in. And then twenty six, twenty seven, three million more than we're bringing in. So you'll see that, you know, it is a controlled decrease. Uh, and we're not cleaning out of control, but we still have to be responsible and careful as we go. Um, this multi-year projection, okay, we're responsible to show the county that we can pay our bills and pay our teachers, pay everything, pay our classifieds after three years, pay everything, pay all our bills for three years. Based on this year's assumptions, lots maintain 3% in reserve for emergency. That's our requirement. We have to always be able to show three years of being able to pay for everything and have 3% available for emergencies. In this case, we almost get there, okay? We almost get there. We definitely can pay all our bills this year coming up, twenty four, twenty five. Twenty five, twenty six, we can pay all our bills again. Twenty six, twenty seven, we have to do this budget adjustment. So the green is the reserve. We're required to have 2.82 million dollars that year. We expect to have to have that much as our 3% reserve in that year, in twenty six, twenty seven. So to get there for this year, we had to make, in addition to those savings that we realized and do some of the budget adjustments that we've made, uh, in the spring planning for this year. Uh, in addition to the members of teachers who, um, you know, are, are not, uh, bring, being brought back on contract at this point to be budget responsible, if they were temporary teachers, all those tough decisions we've had to make still leave us a little bit short in that third year now. So how much short? 2.2 million. So if you balance all our budgets and the way we project, in the third year, we have about $600,000, okay? So we have about $600,000 in the third year, twenty six, twenty seven, at the end of the year. That's if we spend everything and we just do everything that we, as planned. So sometime in between now and then, we've got to find 2.2 million dollars. And you'll recall that the county has had us do, uh, a resolution the last several, you know, the interim periods, last budget cycle, where we say that we will find that. And you, you might recall that in the second interim, it got all the way up to nine point something million that we had to say, yeah, and to, the third year, by then we'll find it. Well, we've already found a lot of that, most of that and clawed back and, 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 and made things balance out for these next couple of years. Because that was actually the third year. So we've actually got right for that year and pushed it out another year. We're almost right there. Again, we have to do the resolution, you'll see that, um, as a voting item. Uh, but that, it, it's, uh, again, it's to, to make sure that we have that 3% reserve in the third year. So all I would say, given the circumstances, given, given the following budget, given what we see around our county and in our state, our budget is healthy. Um, and, and, you know, and will ma- remain so. We just have to be responsible as, as we continue down this path. I told you I would tell you where the nineteen million dollars in restricted money was. Uh, just to be fully transparent, this is where that, uh, the restricted balance detail. So I said, you know, we planned on spending everything in restricted and unrestricted and restricted had a nineteen million dollar balance after this year is over. Well, here's where, uh, we expect that balance to be. ELOP again, once we plan out ELOP, I expect that balance is going to go down, but we have not done that work yet. It's not due right now, so we haven't done it yet. I expect ELOP is going, is going to be significantly lower than it is right there. So I don't think it will be nineteen million, but right now we have to show you where that money is. And that right now, it's sitting in that fund balance at the end of the year. Uh, learning recovery, uh, emergency block grant is another good one. Uh, you, you heard that ESSER is expiring in September, ESSER three is expiring in September. Well, ESSER three, it wasn't just that $523,000 that fell out of the sky last, uh, few weeks ago. It, it was actually a much bigger, uh, fund that was given to help with pandemic, uh, you know, in, in dealing with it, help, help us with the pandemic. It's still, we still have, uh, some money in ESSER three, but it's almost spent out. And our district has used it for counselors, uh, additional supports and things like that. We've had to, fortunately, we still have learning recovery block grant. And we are backfilling those positions with learning recovery block grant now. So even though ESSER three is going away, we have learning recovery block grant to continue to support our students who have needs, to continue the interventions that have been, uh, begun in the interest of, uh, resolving, mitigating pandemic problems. Uh, budget commitments, this is, um, one that we talked about last year. One of the items that we talked a lot about was curriculum. And curriculum is not appearing in the commitments. And oh no, but it's good. Because curriculum is actually budgeted for social science and science are, the expenditure for, um, science is underway. We don't expect it's gonna, uh, happen, you know, it's not going to arrive before this fiscal year is over, so we'll fall into the next fiscal year. And social science, uh, we expect that process to, uh, go through next year. And the money has been budgeted and set aside for those intentions. You know, a combination of, uh, the commitment that we have, uh, lottery funds and art music instructional, uh, materials funds. Those are the three sources that we would intend to use to get, uh, current new science and social science curriculum. Other funds, um, not a lot to see here, but, uh, these are not our everyday funds that we're working with. But these, you know, these are, right, there's our charter school, uh, in, um, what was it, integrity, sorry, I almost said energy. Um, cafeteria, special revenue fund, uh, one thing that we're working on right now with, uh, cafeteria is to replace the tables and benches at the, in the cafeterias. Uh, we're, uh, putting an order out before this year, uh, this fiscal year ends uh, to try and replace, uh, all the, uh, the dated and weighted, uh, cafeteria materials that we have. And getting lighter, safer stuff, easier things for our employees to move around and clean. So I promised I talked about enrollment, ADA and funded ADA. This is a very complicated subject. I'll try to make it as understandable as possible, okay? The gray line is how much we're receiving in funds, okay? The blue line is how many students we have. And the orange line is how many students are actually showing up to school, okay? On, on, on an average year, okay? So we are funded on how many students come to school. It doesn't matter how many students are enrolled. It doesn't matter how many students are enrolled. Our funding comes from how many students show up and are in class, okay? So the state made some changes. You'll see the numbers all track pretty close to each other. Amira, can you help me out and go kind of point at the screen to where I'm talking about? All right, help me, I, yeah. So in the beginning, yeah, they're all three are pretty close to each other in the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen. All three lines are tracking with each other, you know, it makes sense. There's the enrollment. And how much money we're getting and how many students are actually coming. So it's all pretty tight. And that's the way it's supposed to look. That's the way it always looked in California, pretty tight that way. Then you see in twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-one, the pandemic hits. And now they. They don't wanna encourage people to not, to come to school when they're ill. So they don't, you know, and that's, that was a big movement, as we all remember. Uh, and which drove down attendance, but rightfully so. It probably saved some grandparents' lives, some parents' lives. It was the right move at the right time. But. It, it had an impact here and it changed our attendance dramatically. So you see the orange is how many kids were showing up to school and you see during those first. Uh, three pandemic years, it, it really drops off. The blue shows you how many students were in, enrolled. So the enrollment dropped too, but it does not drop as dramatically as the ADA. So the enrollment's dropping like this and the ADA is dropping more because we're telling people, don't come if you're coughing, right? And, and again, rightfully so, I'm not making judgments, it was the right call. Well, I am making a judgment, it's the right call. Uh, okay, so then all of a sudden, twenty-two, twenty-three, they said. We're changing it. Now we're doing the three-year average. Um. And, and what? They, they, they held us harmless. In other words, they gave us the money for the year before. How many kids were in school the year before? And they kept that money and they tried to not punish us for people not showing up. So what happens in that twenty-two, twenty-three year, it starts getting way far apart. The reason is because they started doing. The three-year average. They started saying, okay, we don't want all the schools to run out of money. We don't want all the schools to only be funded on their attendance because it's gonna be devastating to kids. It's gonna be devastating to programs, teachers are gonna lose their jobs. Classified staff are gonna lose their jobs. So they said, we'll do it the three-year average because they knew that that would cover those two prior years, okay? So that would help. Move the attendance higher than it had been because those years didn't include the, the disappearing. The disappearance of the attendance. So that happens in the first couple of years. So you'll see the gray line in twenty-two, twenty-three is so high above. We were being funded. Our, the money that we received was for forty-six hundred students. But really, we're only serving like thirty-seven hundred. Okay, so we were getting really a lot more funding to work with than, than we had students. And so that was very comfortable, okay? That'll enable us to do some things, to make some choices. Even to put some funds off so that we could sustain programs longer the way has been done, the way that we're doing now, the way we're coming out of it. So you'll see, uh, now that those three years, the whole harmless years are starting to come off of the average. The gray line no longer has whole, whole harmless years in it and only has our real average. So you'll see it crossing all the way, twenty-four, twenty-five. Yeah, now you see it, it crossed the blue line again. The gray line should always be across the blue, it should only, always be below the blue because you can't have more kids showing up than you have enrolled. Right? But the, the last five years, the gray line has been higher than the blue line. Because it had the averages of those, and then the whole harmless years and then the averages of those other years. Uh, and, and the averages included the whole harmless. So we really got held harmless for really a long time. It didn't really fall out of that budget until this past year. So this is the first year that we're working on the true average. Um, and you see that the gray line is back below the blue line. Okay, that's really where it belongs. So again, we're coming back to normal. But it, it doesn't exactly feel like normal because that's. Again, when you, you, almost a thousand kids more that we've, we were funded. Here's the table, it's also on your printout. Uh, but when you look at that table that was used for this chart. Uh, it, you know, it. It's, it's that twenty-two, twenty-three year. Actual ADA, thirty-seven hundred students funded a forty-six hundred students. So again, that was a lot of extra funding to work with. And again, I think great choices were made with that funding, great supports put in place. But now as things normalize and get back to where the gray line is below the blue line, we face that. Challenge and that pressure to, uh, make sure our funds go as far as possible in serving today's students with today's money. Okay? So any other questions about that, anytime? Unseen impact, thank you, Marina. Uh. Unseen impact of declining enrollment, we talked about this, we, last year, we cannot solve this problem just with attrition. We've had to make difficult budget choices. We have solved a lot of it with attrition. But it's, and by attrition, I mean when somebody retires or goes to another district to, to gain employment. We try not to fill that position if we can. We try to, you know, fill the service to the students. But not add back a position, uh, to, to do it. So. We can't just do it with attrition and this, this slide shows you why. The average cost of one teacher is one hundred and forty-five thousand, almost one forty-six. I'm sure that's news to our teachers. Um, but it is. That's the actual cost when you add in all the benefits and all those things that come with it. Um. And you see that the cost of a, of a TK twenty-four student classroom or, or first grade classroom. Is about three hundred and seventy-two thousand. That cost, that's how much it brings in, that's how much revenue. Cause each student brings in about fifteen thousand dollars. So if each student's bringing in fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand five hundred dollars in those grade levels. That gives you the three hundred and seventy-two, the teacher's, uh, compensation, total compensation and cost is one forty-five. So the difference is two twenty-six. So even with attrition, you still haven't even solved half of the problem. You still have to make budget cuts from other places. Okay, in an upper grade, it becomes even more dramatic because the teacher's covering more students. They're covering thirty-three students. So that's four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars worth of revenue. Uh, upper grade students bring in a little, little bit less revenue. And the result is that there's a difference of three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. So you can't just solve it with attrition. We have to make tough choices. We've been making them as, as a, as a district, as a board, as an executive cabinet, as a leadership team. But we are going to have to continue to be pressed to make these difficult choices. As I do expect our enrollment is gonna decline for at least a few more years.
That's considering that the class backs to be pulled too.
Yes, exactly, exactly, exactly. And a lot of them are not. Uh, we're tighter then, uh, I think in the projections for this year, the, the projections are tight. Um, which is again, response, responsible budgeting in a collaboration between HR and business. Um, we had, uh. This impact of attendance, I remind you from last year, we talked about, uh, it's approximately fifteen thousand dollars per student. That's a rough estimate that we received. Uh, again, that equals, uh, over eighty dollars a day per student when they're absent. We don't get that eighty dollars for that student that day. Uh, so if you look at a student that shows up a hundred and seventy-two days at school. We receive fourteen thousand three hundred and seventy instead of the fifteen thousand. So the impact is real. You know, you get down to our average for this year, this is this year's average. Uh, we received. We had ninety-two point two seven percent and we received thirteen eight forty for each fifteen thousand. That we could have received in, or we could have set up to receive in revenue, okay? So that's how that's working, there is an impact. So next steps, the board adopts the budget and the LCAP. Uh, we submit to the county office and then we start working on. September's un-audited actuals for last year's budget, the budget year that is closing now. And we audit them internally and get un-audited. Unofficially audited the actuals in September. And then, uh, we, we should get a budget from the state by the end of this month. And there could be a forty-five day revision, cause I know at the state level, there's still confusion between. The legislature and the governor on. Uh, something that they're calling a budget maneuver and they, they think they found a way around that. But that's a whole separate story that I'll tell you about, uh, come in September.
Because it's a public hearing, are there?
Fair enough.
Thank you.
And last, but sorry, I did not, uh. Thank the team and especially Marina. Marina does the, the job on all of this work and is, is integral to the work and I so appreciate it.
So are we. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, through the board, have questions for Dr. Burke?
Uh, follow Marion Stroes, uh, leading sale, referring to Marina. I love this, like, uh, you have questions, Dr. Burke, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, trustee Ben Corcasanina?
Uh, I have. Question, I have a question. Um, since we have to sign our, our, something, a, um. Something to the county in regards to our.
The resolution.
Resolution, uh, regards to our budget.
Yes.
Uh, for the three years. Since we've shown that we will be cleared, uh, the three years. Are we good with the county now?
So we have to, and we, we have to, now that we've shown that we're good for the last three years. And. You know, that, the nine million dollar shortfall was going to be. The third year out, when at the time it was. Only, you know, a year and a half away, if that's, if you can imagine, you know. So going through the end of this year, that's ending right now. Then another year in the third year out was right then, it was fourteen months away and we're nine and a half million short. Uh, for that year, for that budget year. That has been resolved because that is now next year. But we are still two point two million dollars short on the third year. And again, I have no reservations in saying we're gonna be able to find it and get the job done and maintain our three percent reserve. Uh, we've got plenty of time to do it, plenty of creativity and flexibility and, uh, to, to do those things. But we're still gonna have to agree to a resolution that says. You know, in the next three years, we are going to find that two point two and make sure that the district has its three percent reserve. In, uh, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Okay, perfect. But you said, um.
I don't.
That.
Right there.
Right, on twenty-five, twenty-six, that was our third year.
It was. But it's always moving target, cause now when we start, we adopt this budget. Now they move the third year out again. So it's like always.
Well, if we signed a resolution, shouldn't that clear?
That, that will clear it out. The last resolution's in good shape, but now we're gonna need a new resolution for twenty-six, twenty-seven. So that we've basically met the resolution that we made. Uh, just a few months ago for twenty-five, twenty-six for nine and a half million dollars. You can check that box, we did that. Uh, the resolution that was for three million dollars-ish in December, you can check that box, we've done that. We, we, we have to make a new re- resolution again, unfortunately. Uh, I have no question, we'll check that box. It's just, we have to actually check it, we can't assume.
But we fulfilled that.
Yep.
Previous.
The nine and a half, we're done, we're good to go. Which is, uh, very, it's a relief, you know, cause that's a big number.
The other, the other thing is, um, how would? Uh, I know that this talks about four, four-day work week.
Hmm.
Um. Is that something that would affect us? I know that that's very difficult in the education world. Um, but that's something that has been. That's thrown out there.
Yeah, we're actually in a four-day work week right now, this summer, but it's a limited scope and, uh. Um. That's at the district office for the summer for, in the interest of, you know, my, contributed to our green ribbon school, uh, board. Um. So. The reality of a, a four-week, a, a four-day work week for, or four-day school week for children, I think is tough. In the immediate, short term. Uh, just because. Uh, for lack of better word, we, we serve as the babysitters for a lot of working, uh, uh, parents, guardians that are out there that. If we weren't there, then a lot of kids would be unattended. I think society would have to take a pretty. Significant shift towards a four-day work week before schools are gonna be able to. They're gonna, society's gonna have to lead the way and get it done and then the schools can trail because. We play that critical role, role of keeping kids safe, you know, that, all those hours in the week.
I know, cause that's something that has been. Talked about and I know that when we're a delegate, it's on demand. That. That conversation has been. Kind of. Brought up, but if I. I'm in education, it's not, it's not a hot topic.
Yeah, I can't quite get the momentum.
Budget and so on. It's gonna affect us, but it's not. It's not gonna be helped.
It shouldn't, it shouldn't impact us too much, um, you know, cause the bottom line is gonna still be that. You know, if we even had some positions moving into a forty-hour, uh, four, four-ten. The number of hours remains the same, the number, you know, the cost of benefits remains the same. General costs are gonna stay. Pretty equitable, you know, we might realize a little bit of savings and some energy costs if it went, it went that way. But overall, it would really not have too big of an impact either way if it, if it did come to fruition for it. Um. I've worked four-ten's before and it's, it's not so bad.
Okay. Thank you.
I think it looks like page seventeen, slide seventeen, the restricted balance detail. There. Um, so I noticed, for instance. Um. Like, we have ELOP money, but, uh, but we know that some of that is because of the fact that we have time. To still spend it out, correct?
Hmm.
Um. But in looking, I noticed, for instance, our special education fund is at twenty-three cents. As we have spent our years supplying.
And so.
And yes. And, uh, but, um, what's the difference when it comes to the special education early intervention, which is running close to a million? So what is the, like, why? Why is, I'm. Just wondering. Why there is a, that big a difference with those two funds because they sound. Like. They should, like. Similar funding. You know, I, I realize that, that from what I, from what I think, I understand, early intervention, as we are talking with our littlest ones.
Mm-hmm.
And so, um. Wonder, wondering. Um, if that fund just does not work the same and, and as far as expenses, or is that something that because, yes?
I'll take the first part and then I'll, I'll pass to Dr. Kraft, but, uh, the, it, it doesn't work the same in that. In that the special education overall, the, the allocation does not. Meet the minimum need that we have, uh, for.
Doesn't for anyone.
For anyone, right, so it spends out. Correct, and we have to, you know, uh, support that fund from the general fund. So that fund has that. It just naturally happens. Or a special education early intervention. Uh, is more of a, you know, a, a planned out expenditure. Uh, it's not, doesn't happen to us. Where it gets overrun automatically. So that mon- money is available for, you know, budgeting in for application this year.
Those are funds that are used when students transition from art. Students back to part C to B. Um, and being able to identify and provide services for our SDC preschool program. Um, but there, there are other funding sources that are kind of what we talked about earlier. That may be expensed out. This is something that I can have, um. Uh, Dr. Vargas kind of tease out, cause we did actually have a, a windfall of additional funding. One-time monies also with special education. And so, um, as we are normalizing, we have taken a significant, uh, drop. In enrollment in preschool, uh, because of the TK rollout. So as we start kind of balancing out over the big scheme of things. Um. I, I suspect that we'll be expensing in addition to contributing. Um, to continue our programming in SDC preschool.
It's just one of those faces where, where I would hate for. Someone to look at that and go, wait a minute, why did they not spend money on, on our kids who needed them to spend money on that? And so, and some sort of. Accompanying explanation, especially on those, I feel is really important. Um, when we have a balance, especially like that.
Um, and maybe Dr. Kraft can correct me if I'm wrong, also with special education, um, in the, um. TK through sixth grade side, you're also identifying students throughout the year. So that also contributes, whereas. The special education early intervention, there's students that are coming to us already identified. From the doctor, for example, that has identified them. So, um. I think that that contributes, is that throughout the year, we're identifying new students?
That's the part C to part B, the way that the. Law, uh, addresses students who are identified early. Um, prior to coming to, uh, to, um, TK's twelve system. Um, they are in the regional system. And so they will be identified, that this, the parents are very involved, they, um. Um, it's on the T, it's a, this is part plan, so, um. You know, services are, uh, much more embedded in smaller numbers. But a- as I shared, we did have a windfall of, of funding, so I want. But a- as I shared, we did have a windfall of, of funding, so I wanna look at it, Dr. Vargas, so I'll put that in the board.
Thank you. Should it be outside of the boardroom?
Would you like me to bring more information to the board meeting?
I think so.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Bring it to both.
Any other? Any other questions? And thank you very much, Dr. Burke, we appreciate it and I will Thank you. Hey, we have our